Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corbin, here. Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Ms. Brier.
Here.
Mr. Zwicker.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. First item on the agenda are several proclamations.
Second, please. Proclamation. Whereas in 2013, an estimated 45,220 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 38,460 will die from the disease, whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6 percent. And whereas when symptoms in pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally at a large stage, and 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 800 deaths due to pancreatic cancer will occur in Washington in 2013, and whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in the city of Renton and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Renton support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer and are committed to nothing less than a cure, and whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Renton are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about the pancreatic cancer, research into early detection, causes, and effective treatment. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2013 to be Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed as Fourth Day of November 2013, signed Dennis Law, Mayor, City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Corbin that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is Michelle Bouchard here?
Thank you, Mayor Law, and for everyone attending tonight, I just wanted to thank you for passing this proclamation. My mom, Karen Woodgrove, is going to be a 12-year cancer survivor in February, and this means a lot to us, to our families, and to those who are still battling the disease. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, then, the next proclamation. Whereas DECA is an association of marketing students who are developing leadership skills, learning about business and marketing, and setting future career and education goals, and whereas Hazen High Schools, Lindbergh High Schools, and Renton High Schools, 105 DECA members are part of an organization of more than 10,400 members in 144 chapters in Washington State. And whereas DECA prepares members to handle real-world situations in marketing, business, and entrepreneurship, and whereas DECA provides awareness to the Renton community about local and global issues through participation in multiple and varied community service projects. And whereas DECA provides awareness to the Renton -- excuse me. And whereas the City of Renton deeply appreciates the community service efforts of our local DECA members, now therefore I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 2013 to be DECA Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed as Fourth Day of November 2013, Dennis Law, Mayor, City of the Renton.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Corbin that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a bunch of DECA people here. I'm happy to present this, too. I think we have a DECA president here also, don't we?
Come up front with your camera.
Come on.
Just a second. They want to get another picture here.
Should we do a photo?
I think you might do a few words.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I would like to thank you for proclaiming November as DECA Month on behalf of the Lindbergh, Hazen, and Renton High School DECA chapters. You might be wondering what DECA is, so I'll briefly summarize it. It is a marketing/business organization that focuses on competition, community service, and leadership. It's all about building our professional skills and preparing us for our future. All of the DECA chapters are extremely involved in community service. As an example, the Lindbergh DECA chapter has chosen Child Haven as our charity of the year and is a goal of raising $2,000. We have also applied for a matching grant, bringing our total up to $4,000. This money would be for children who are neglected, abused, and have unstable homes. We have raised over $600 so far this year, and once again, thank you for supporting our DECA programs in all of the Renton School District High Schools. Thank you.
Nice.
Well done.
Stand up for a picture.
Nice job.
All right, there we go. We've got the proclamation. Everybody looking good. No blinking, and I'll take several shots with this camera. It's small. And that's well. One more for safekeeping with that camera.
Wait.
Paparazzi.
You're really good.
Oh, I like the blue one.
And one more safety.
Whereas America's Promise Alliance will launch 100 Community Grad Nation Summits in 2013, 2014, and one of the first summits will be the Northwest Grad Nation Regional Summit on November 8, 2013, in Bellevue. And whereas Grad Nation Day highlights efforts at community leaders, parents, educators, mentors, volunteers, and students to support the America's Promise Alliance Grad Nation Campaign to end the school dropout crisis and achieve a 90 percent national high school graduation rate by 2020. And whereas recognizing high school graduation matters to individuals, families, communities, and society, and whereas the City of Renton, along with the Renton School District, is partnering with school districts and agencies throughout King, Kitsap, Pierce, and Snohomish Counties to highlight the work of collaborative initiatives such as East Side Pathways, The Roadmap Project, Building Bridges, Race to the Top, and additional efforts to increase the graduation rates among the high school students. And whereas the Northwest Graduation Regional Summit has over 30 summit partners working in coordination to provide information and data on the best and most promising practices to increase graduation rates in the Northwest Region, and whereas the Northwest Grad Nation Regional Summit supports community leaders' resolve to address the dropout crisis through innovative collaborative initiatives encouraging student engagement, increasing resiliency, and enhancing academic support. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 8, 2013, to be Grad Nation Day in the City of Renton, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and urge the citizens of Renton to support our young people by working together and creating local solutions to this national crisis. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed as Fourth Day of November 2013, Dennis Law, Mayor, City of the Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I move that this proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Taylor, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's my pleasure to be able to present this proclamation to Damian Patton, who's the former principal of Renton High School and is now the chief academic officer for the Renton School District.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for taking the time to approve this proclamation, and I think it's very apropos that we recognize DECA right before this because it is activities like those that keep our students engaged, successful, and on the way to college and career once they graduate from any of our high schools in the district. And just moving forward, we look to the continued relationship with the city and the opportunities to partner, to continue to support not only our students who are currently in school, but also to those who have dropped out and were seeking to reengage to make sure that they become outstanding members of our community, not only in the City of Renton, but in the state of Washington. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Damian. Okay, we're going to move on to a public hearing. Let's see. Angie, you've got the short straw.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Angie Mathias. I'm a planner here with the city, and I'm here before you this evening to hold a public hearing in the proposed Meritons Annexation. So, this is actually the second time that you've seen this annexation before you, and you can see sort of our annexation process. The petitioner had originally submitted a 10 percent petition, which was just sort of their notice of intent telling you that this is something they'd like to do. Then they circulated their 60 percent petition. It's been certified by King County as in fact being a valid petition, and now we're before you holding a public hearing. So, the location, it's in the northeastern corner of the city, up there just off Sunset Boulevard or southeast Renton Issaquah Road. It is within our potential annexation area. It's approximately 4.2 acres in size. It's a single-family piece of land that's also got some vacant area to it. The boundaries are northeast 16th Street to the north, parcel lines to the east and the west, and then at the south, it's also a parcel line, but it's very close to the southeast Renton Issaquah Road. This previously had been annexed as an annexation called Sunset East. It was an unincorporated island. We did this probably three to four years ago, but then that area, there's a caveat within unincorporated island annexations where the area can repeal the annexation by initiative and then put it forward to a vote of the people that live there, and they did in fact repeal that annexation. So, this is a small piece of that annexation moving forward separately. There are no identified potential issues that we are aware of that are in the immediate area or the surrounding area. So, here's an aerial of it, and it is just that one parcel that you can see that's coming in or being proposed to come into the city. There's really essentially no topographical issues within the area. There's a small area of 15 to 25 percent slopes just within that area, and then down there by southeast Renton Issaquah Road, you can see it becomes more steep, but in the immediate annexation area, there's no topography that we would be concerned with. We also look at streams and wetlands. There is a Class IV stream approximately 600 feet to the east, and then Honey Creek, which is a Class IV stream that runs to the south, that one that's the east that's about 600 feet, is unnamed, and these are just in proximity but don't have any immediate impact on this proposed annexation area. Public services currently, it's served by Renton Fire, or by Fire District 25. Renton Fire serves that under contract but would serve it directly if the area were to annex. Water District 90 provides water, and Renton Sewer provides sewer utility if the area were to have sewer. Those would not change upon annexation, and it's in the Issaquah School District. That also would not change. So, we also tonight are talking about zoning of this potential annexation area and what it might be zoned, and as part of that, we look at what King County has the area designated and how they have it zoned. King County has it designated as urban residential medium, and that allows for a range of density between four and 12 dwelling units, and they've chosen to zone it with R4, residential four dwelling units per acre. This area actually was pre-zoned back in 1996 as part of the May Valley Prezone, and it was pre-zoned with R5, but we don't have that zoning designation available to us anymore, and so that's why we're going through this process of pre-zoning it again. So, we have, it's designated in our comprehensive plan as residential low density. That carries with it three possible zoning designations: resource conservation, which would only allow one house per 10 acres, or R1, which allows one house per acre, or R4, which will allow four dwelling units per acre. The surrounding zoning in the area is R8, abuts it immediately to the west, but R4 abuts it immediately to the north, so it sort of is right there on that threshold. So, we look at, but that R8 is not a possibility for us because it's that residential low-density designation. We also look at our comprehensive plan to see if it helps us make any determinations about what appropriately would be zoned. Policy LU151 says that we should zone R4 on lands where there are not extensive constraints, and then policy LU153 says that extensive constraints are where there is a significant percentage of the area that has critical areas, and we looked at that. There were no streams or wetlands or steep topography in the area. There's no, the pervasive critical areas would separate the developable areas, and since there's not really any critical areas, that's not relevant. Development would be non-contiguous, the area is an urban separator, or development, if it were to occur, would require modifications or variances to meet that density. None of those are applicable because the critical areas are not pervasive in the area. So, it's recommended that the pre-zoning on this be R4, and that that would be four dwelling units per acre for this parcel and for this annexation area. As far as the annexation goes, we also look at our comprehensive plan and see if it gives us any criteria or any information about annexations, and our comprehensive policy or plan says that we should support annexation of areas that are within our PAA and can be efficiently provided with infrastructure and city services, are urban separators, or have environmental constraints. And this is an area that can be efficiently provided with infrastructure and city services. It also says that we should promote annexation of areas with a population who already use our services or impact our infrastructure. And as you saw, it's an island, so it's pretty much surrounded by areas that we're already providing with infrastructure and services. So, the next step for us would be to submit this to the Boundary Review Board, King County Boundary Review Board, and so we like to look at their policies ahead of time and see, geez, do we think that this will meet their criteria and their policies? And the relevant ones to this annexation are the preservation of natural neighborhoods and communities. This wouldn't change that if this area annexed. To use physical boundaries, including but not limited to bodies of water, highways, or land contours. It uses parcel lines and roadways. That's an acceptable boundary, use of physical boundaries. To preserve logical service areas, those are all agreed to previously. We're not proposing any changes with that with the water and sewer and those sorts of things. It's a perfectly regular boundary, and it's an unincorporated area that's urban in character, and that's another one of their criteria. Everything is inside that urban growth boundary, so it is an urban area. We also do a fiscal analysis. The current conditions are that there's just one dwelling unit with an estimated three residents. We also look at the capacity of the area potentially, so if the area were to develop with that R4 zoning and if development were to occur, it's based on our previous development under R4. It's reasonable to assume that there might be an additional 13 dwelling units with an additional 36 residents. For the purposes of the fiscal analysis, we assume that costs increase at about 3.3 percent annually, but revenue just increases at 2.5 percent annually, and we limit that to sales tax, utility tax, and the franchise fee. So, with the existing development with that one dwelling unit, we estimate that revenues would be about $1,600 with costs at about $1,700. At year 10, if that were to fully develop, we estimate that revenues would be about $25,000, and costs would be at about $18,000 to the operating fund. To our capital and enterprise funds, at existing development, we estimate the revenues to be about $138 with costs at about $25, and that if it were to fully build out again by year 10, estimated revenues to the capital and enterprise funds are at about $5,400 with costs at about $3,000. We also ask all departments to review proposed annexations and give them the opportunity to say, hey, we have some concerns about this as it's proposed, and please pay attention to this. So, we did that, and all the departments indicated that it's, as it is proposed, represents a logical extension of their services, and they did not have any concerns with the proposed annexation. In conclusion, the best interests and welfare, general welfare of the city are served by this annexation. It indeed represents a logical extension of our services. It's consistent with our annexation policies, and it appears to be consistent with Boundary Review Board criteria. Therefore, the administration recommends that council go ahead and accept this 60 percent petition to annex and then authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the Boundary Review Board.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Angie, going back to the previous annexation attempt and that type of thing, can you give me a little more background on it? It appears that since there's now a single dwelling, there is a larger area that annexed, de-annexed, and now it's a smaller part.
Correct. So, that whole unincorporated island, so it actually, that black boundary, it used to extend a little bit further to the east there, and that actually came in as Windstone Four, I believe, about a year ago, and they did sort of something similar. They said, hey, the city tried to annex this unincorporated island, and we appreciated that, but we still want to do business with the City of Renton, and so can we try this 60 percent method where we move forward with the property owner signing a petition? And so, that area has come in, and now this property owner is proposing to come in under the same method of annexation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jason, do we have any correspondence?
No, Mr. Mayor. No correspondence.
We have two people signed up to testify on this public hearing, but I'm not sure this is where you wanted to be in regards to trees. William Torberson, did you want to testify on this annexation?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no.
Okay, is the same with Eileen Sunderland? So, you just want to be under audience comment? Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Corbin, that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move that the council accept the 60 percent direct petition to annex and authorize the administration to forward the notice of intent to the Boundary Review Board.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Ms. Brier, that council approve the 60 percent direct petition to annex. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie.
Thanks, Angie.
Chip, thanks for all your input. That was very helpful.
Couldn't have done it without him.
Moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, council, two items. One, wanted to just make the council and the community aware, a longtime community supporter and charitable organization, volunteer organization, the Renton Lions Club, celebrating 75 years of serving the Renton community in the world. Chartered in 1938, the Renton Lions Club has a long history of humanitarian efforts and community contributions. Most recently, they play a significant role in Renton River Days as they host the Saturday morning pancake breakfast, assist with the Saturday parade, and man the Lions screening test van and Lions information booth. We want to just let the community know and certainly congratulate them and thank them for their many years of hard work and commitment that have helped to benefit our Renton community. The second item, I'll let our city attorney Larry Warren brief the council on.
Mr. Mayor and council, I thought, I intended to send out a email to the council, but this might be a more appropriate forum to bring you up to date. As the council knows, it has been working for several years on the libraries through KCLS. The council's done such things as issued bonds, and you've adopted the Sunset Area Redevelopment Plan. As you probably will recall, or maybe not, some time ago, I briefed you on a proposed real estate transaction whereby the city would obtain the necessary property in the Harrington area along Sunset Avenue between Sunset Boulevard and Sunset Lane from a private developer. This is a four-way transaction, so it gets a little complicated, but I'll run through quickly. Renton Housing Authority is selling property to a private developer, Culpits. Culpits is then selling part of that property to the city, and then the city is essentially doing a long-term land lease to King County Library System to build a library on that site. This has been a many-year project for the city. The legal side has taken just over a year. So, last week, we had two major developments. The first was Culpits signed to a transaction with the city for purchase-sales agreement on the area, which was a precondition for, and then helped lead to the Renton Housing Authority selling the property to Culpits. Then that transaction closed the last day of last month. So, we've taken two huge steps along the line. The next step will be after some site cleanup by Culpits, then we'll close the transaction to the city and we'll be ready to break ground for the library.
Andy, great news.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
And the council will be briefed, I think we've scheduled that for the 18th of November. We'll have KCLS here to provide an update on both libraries and how this is going.
Okay, moving on to audience comment. We have several people signed up to address the council. Pardon me. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name, city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. We have a timer next to the city clerk, so first is Howard McBomber.
Howard McBomber lives in the Renton Islands. Two things. Number one, we have a lot of challenges in our city. A lot of the challenges have to do with those people who are below the median level of income in the city. Some are way down at the bottom, and I'm dealing with some organizations, and you do too, and you help us out tremendously, and that's the absolute homeless situation and the people on the community feeding program. And just, we have a great volunteer experience here. We're trying to provide food for these folks. We're right now serving five, during the regular week, we serve at the Salvation Army, and anybody who wants a meal can go there at 5:30 in the afternoon, and we're looking for volunteers all the time to participate, and you can contact anybody at the Salvation Army, they can help you with that, as well as many of the churches in the area. The second one has to do with some other areas that we're looking at, that's housing. We'll be probably asking for two different kinds of housing. One's going to be a shelter and a well for overnight, safe places for people to stay. We have a problem. I was here with Mr. Taylor, and we talked to the homeless, and one of the people who are there talking at the, it's a county-wide organization which Greg Taylor's part of, he said that they always have to turn away people from the shelters. There is not enough shelter space for the people there, and they always ask a question, where can I go and be safe and not get in trouble? And the man said, and he's the guy who does it, he said, I don't have an answer for them. We don't have a place. And I think that Renton has enough civic volunteerism that we can pull this together one way or another. We have a place right downstairs, which is a tremendous blessing, which the city helped us with, that's the center of hope, which does tremendous work, and we're bringing that more and more up to speed, and that's kind of exciting. And appreciate all your help with that, but we need to look at a wider thing, and what I'm asking for is just the general public. If you've got eyes, if you have something, you know, a warehouse that'd be safe, then we could start running that through the organization and get that done. Secondly, my pet project, by the way, it's wonderful news that we're getting the library of the Highlands. This is super. We have a playground up there that's going to be out of this world. We have so many wonderful things happening up there in the Sunset Development District. Most important thing, though, are the people. We always have to remember that we're always doing this. We always have to remember that we're always doing this for the people, and we're doing it for the people who need it. And not everybody's total need. There's all kinds of levels of neediness. There's the absolute neediness where we, where we need to help these people no matter what, because it's life and death sort of situation. And we may be hitting that again if the weather gets cold. And so that's something we're, and I'm sure you're going to participate, and we've done things like put them up for the night at the Highlands Community Center. We've had occasions when that was, is a safe place. We do that sort of thing. The second one is a more long-term program where we provide housing, affordable housing, owner-occupied, that stabilizes the area. I know that Greg Taylor's extremely interested in getting high-wage jobs so the people aren't in poverty, period, which we all pray for, but getting it, we need to all work together. And this, we're going to have an exciting winter. We're looking for help, looking for ideas. Jay and I conversed, and after this, tomorrow, we will be sitting down, talking, and getting things working out more and more on getting the affordable housing and the people in the bottom half of our income group taken care of. Everybody needs it. We are not building enough, I'm getting close, not building enough housing. We're not taking care of these things as much as we should. So it's just a continued thing, and if you have ideas, or you have programs or things, I think we need to bring those forth and use our Renton volunteerism. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Taylor.
I'd just like to thank you, Howard, for coming forth and sharing the spirit of community compassion. You know, we've got some wonderful folks in this community. We're a very strong city of volunteers and people that care about people, and it's that kind of spirit that's going to help us to create some shared prosperity throughout our community. Thank you.
Here, here.
Okay, next is William Torberson.
Mayor, city council? My name is William Torberson, T-O-R-B-E-N-S-O-N. My parents moved here in 1947, which is a long time ago, and they brought me with them, me and my sister. And where they passed away in 98, and we inherited the property in 98. And we even had problems with our neighbor, his trees. Very basic thing, but it's been a very annoying thing. The man on the, on our south side had about acre of land that he developed back probably in, I don't know, maybe 2005, 2006, and then the housing boom went down, and so it's sat basically as it is for the last six, seven years. And we've had, the first couple years, we had a tree fall through our rental house that barely missed a little girl. Then we only had a tree fall myself twice in the last three years. And so the neighbor, you know, I had insurance. I, this is an act of God, unless you contact a neighbor with the certified letter. So we wrote him a letter telling the situation, the trees were, pictures of them, we showed the damage that was caused. And he's living out of state, he basically ignored it. And so we basically lost my insurance because they canceled me. And so we were like, what can we do? So he said, well, go to the city. So we came here last, I guess, December of 2012, and saw Tim, yeah, Tim, I'm sorry, yeah, Tim Lawless. He had up there in code enforcement. He was very, very nice to us. He's very cooperative. He said, I understand where you're coming from. It's a real problem, and I'm worried about somebody being injured or worse than that. And so he said, well, we're going to send out an arborist to our property within a short time. And they did, brought out an arborist, you know, individual. And we walked around the property and looked at the neighbor's property, and we saw, I mean, we saw several trees that were, that had broke off or were dead and were very sickly. And then we had one tree that was next to my house that was, you know, that it had no bark, it was just bare, bare tree, all white. I said, well, you see, this tree here is definitely dead. This tree here is leaning and is going to fall within a year or so. He said, well, I can't certify because I can't go on the property. It's part of the property. I can't tell you that they're going to be, I can't tell you that they're going to fall because I can't examine the roots. I said, well, I can see from here they're going to fall because they have on no bark. And so I got load from Renton here, basically February 1st of 13, that said basically, the city policy prevents staff from getting involved in private property. What I want to know is, is there a code regarding dead, dangerous things on property that will damage a neighbor's property? And to make a long story short, the tree that I said is going to fall before long, it fell, yeah, it fell Saturday, the first to remember. Of course, it fell on my property, and it smashed a brand-new carport and a fence. And so I called my insurance company today, and they says, I said, I've tried everything I can, and I haven't gone anywhere. He says, try this thing again and see if they have a, what their policy is on dangerous situations on property. So I'm kind of on my last idea what to do here.
Okay. Mr. Warren, are you in a position to be able to answer that, or do we need to do some research?
Mr. Mayor, I would have to double-check and do some research on the topic. I don't believe we have a dangerous tree ordinance, but there's, there's a lot of regulations on the books, so I'd have to take a look.
Yeah, there are things that we can do with the trees on public property versus private property, but nonetheless, what we'll do is have the city attorney's office get together with Tim Lawless and code enforcement, and we'll take a look at that particular case. And we'll, we've got your address here, so we'll get in touch with you to let you know what, if anything, we can do.
I mean, the man is not, apparently he's not very concerned about it. Just, it's happened now five times. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, I had one, Randy Corman here, one clarifying question. Did, did he start developing that property and then stop? Is that what you were saying?
Okay, I'm quite, I remember seeing a sign there, you know, on the street, we're developing, I'm quite sure he goes from 116 to 118.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure he bought the whole section there, and you can tell by the tax value, it's much harder than, higher than our property. So I'm assuming he applied for and got, got the strike pass, I think.
But he didn't come in with grading equipment or anything like?
No, 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 but I mean, it happened right, like, 2007, right, when it went down.
Right.
Well, I think he had a law ready to go, but then he kind of, he started just hanging on to it till hopefully it recovers, and meanwhile, he's letting it, you know, just be what it is.
Okay. All right, well, we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you.
Next is Eileen Sunderland.
I'm Bill's sister.
You're the other one?
No. That was nice of him to say, though. We own the property. We have another brother.
We need to get you on the record with your name and city of residence.
Yeah, my name is Eileen Sunderland, S-U-N-D-E-R-L-A-N-D, and I live in Renton. I live on this property. I don't live in, we have a few houses on this piece of property that our father built many years ago. But a little while ago, I looked up in the Renton City Code, and it's section 411, 4-11-080, it's under hazardous trees, and it says, any tree that poses a high risk of damage to personal property as certified by a qualified arborist and accepted by the city. So, you know, there isn't, there is one, and the arborist did come out, but it didn't do us any good because he said, he said he could not go on the property to look at it. Now, this man who owns this property, he lives in California, we've tried to get in contact with him several times. I sent him a certified letter, he's, and I got the return, I still have it, I have the return in a receipt, that he did get it. I sent him pictures. The, when, I think it was last year, when the third tree fell on one of our houses, and, and one of the renters was in the house when it happened. He could have been killed because the tree fell on the house and it went through the kitchen. One of the branches went right through the kitchen roof and then went through the window. So the, the insurance company got in contact with him. I think they sued him and they won, but the man didn't pay. He just did not respond. So we are just stuck, and, and of course, the insurance canceled us. And so we had to go look for other insurance. And this, this thing that happened Saturday, fell on, he, Bill had worked for two months working on this, this carport, and it fell on that, fell on the fence, and it fell on another neighbor's, the same tree fell on another neighbor's shed and ruined it, too. So it's not just us, it's other neighbors. And then a few years back, there's this third neighbor that, one of this man's tree, one of his trees fell on the house, fell right on the house, and fell, it went through the baby's room and hit the man when he was in the room. So this has been a problem for, since 1996, and we've had no response from this man. And, you know, we're going to get our insurance canceled. You know, we're taxpaying citizens. We don't know what to do. We're stuck. I feel like we're stuck.
Okay, well, again, we will look into that, and we'll be in touch with you.
I appreciate it.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, we have eight items on the consent agenda for your approval. Is there any item that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I move approval of the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, that council approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer.
I just want to point out that, which one is it? Oh, item C is the seaplane base maintenance dredging project, and the low bidder came in at half of what the projected engineer's estimate was. So that's exciting. I believe that's going to happen this winter.
Every once in a while, we get a good report back.
Isn't that nice? Yeah, we'll take them wherever we can. So, good job, Ben, who's in the audience.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Brier?
Yes, the Finance Committee, sorry. The Finance Committee has two reports, or one report, sorry.
The Finance Committee report, approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves repayment on November 4th, 2013. Claim vouchers 325008 to 325341, four wire transfers and one payroll run with benefit withholding payments totaling $8,611,785.50, and payroll vouchers including 732 direct deposits and 54 payroll checks totaling $1,553,563.1. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Brier.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Brier, second by Mr. Person, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Zwicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Planning and Development Committee has a committee report.
A city center community plan annual report. The Planning and Development Committee refers to committee of the whole, the city center community plan annual report for presentation at a future committee of the whole meeting. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
I move that the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
That was all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Resolutions and ordinances? We may have two resolutions. And, oh, one resolution, one ordinance?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, I would like to, I would like to bring a resolution forward. Wait, council has a draft, a draft resolution before. This resolution would be on the subject of the marijuana legalization. It's, it's actually a proposal that because the state has a new set of rules and because our planning department would like to make sure that we have rules that properly address the state's rules, this would, would ask for a, we'd have to have a public hearing, but then a moratorium to give us time to come up with an appropriate rule set. And we spoke briefly about it at the committee of the whole, but took no action there. But at this point, I guess, just, just for the sake of discussion, I would move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Okay.
Mayor, some of the council members have thought that I violated my statement to them earlier in the meeting, that this would be a short and simple resolution, which it is not, uncharacteristically long and windy. So I thought maybe I would cut it back to the bare essentials, and maybe I should just read it as proposed to the council.
Okay, can we just, Mr. Corman, move your resolution to put it on the floor and then pass the resolution after he's had a chance to read it?
Yeah, of course. Yes, yes, yeah.
So it's been moved by Mr. Corman, second by Mr. Person, that we move forward a resolution for possible adoption this evening. Is that okay, Larry?
Yeah, it's fine.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Let's see how much simpler I can make this. Now, resolution, city of Renton, Washington declaring a moratorium on accepting applications for business license or permits for medical and/or recreational marijuana businesses and establishments involved in the sale, manufacture, distribution, or use of marijuana directly in the setting of a public hearing date and establishing a termination date for the moratorium. The resolution reading whereas state initiative, I have to fill in that number, legalized medical marijuana, and whereas initiative 502 legal recreational marijuana, and whereas proposed state regulations would combine many of the rules controlling medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, and whereas additional time is needed to study existing of potential impacts from land use associated with marijuana, and whereas it is necessary to provide the planning commission with a recommendation and forward the planning commission recommendation along with staff's recommendation to the city council. Now therefore, city council of, city of Renton, Washington does resolve as follows, the principles are found true and correct. This Renton City Council hereby declares a moratorium upon the submission, acceptance, processing, or approval of any permit application or licenses by or for new marijuana establishments involved in the sale, use, growing, manufacture, processing marijuana, including any and all aspects of recreational marijuana. Next section, the interim zoning control set forth in this resolution shall be in effect for six months unless subsequently extended by the city council pursuant to state law, and a public hearing, last section of public hearing will be held on December 2nd, 2013.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Brier?
Oh, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just to clarify, towards the end, you talked about, you didn't talk about medicinal, you just listed recreational, and I just want to make sure that you're covering both.
Yes, I think I, we took, we just talked about all new marijuana establishments, including, and the reason included all aspects of recreational marijuana toward the end is there are some concerns about it being involved in private clubs, public nightclubs, cabarets.
But we're still referring to both, medical and recreational?
We're referring to both, yes. So it says, submission, acceptance, processing, or approval of any permit application or licenses for a new marijuana establishment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Zwicker.
Yeah. Mr. Warren, thank you. I like the shorter version better, but I appreciate your initial efforts and hope that we use that as a framework for where we move forward with the planning commission and that type of thing. So with that, I move that the council adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Zwicker, second by Ms. Brier, that council adopt the resolution as read. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that, that, that I think it is appropriate that we come up with appropriate rules. This has potential to change our landscape significantly. The voters did put forward their will, and everything from, I've heard from this council is we intend to comply with the intent of the voters to support, to put a system in place to support the legalization. But because we're, especially the state's kind of brought to our attention that producers and processors are a part of this, and they're, they're going to have certain restrictions and requirements, and we want to make sure that not only the retail outlets, but also the, the production centers are appropriately zoned. So there's, there's a lot of moving pieces that we have to put in place. So there's a lot of moving pieces that we have to put in place. And I don't see this as a hardship for anybody. We will have a public hearing as soon as December 2nd. So anybody that feels like this is putting them out could speak up at that point. But it is important for this community that we get this right. So I'm speaking in favor of the motion, obviously.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Larry. Moving on to an ordinance for second and final reading.
Okay, the ordinance for second and final reading is regarding amending nuisance definitions. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending section 133 of chapter three nuisances of title I administrative of the city code criminalizing nuisance and chronic nuisance conduct for residential locations and in or around commercial, retail, and entertainment businesses by amending the definitions of calls for service, chronic nuisance premises and premises.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person?
I move the, ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corbin, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Mr. Corbin?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Ms. Breer?
Aye.
Mr. Zwicker?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Corbin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just, just, okay, two things. One, just point out that next Monday's council meeting is canceled. It's city holiday. And then secondarily, the, I want to announce November 18th, Monday, November 18th, we will have a committee of the whole meeting, 5:30 PM, in the council chambers right here. Two items on that agenda. First is an update on new KCLS libraries in Renton. We heard about that earlier. And then secondarily, the mid-biennium budget adjustment. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Yes, the transportation aviation committee normally scheduled for this, or Thursday, November 14th, has been canceled. That's it.
Mr. Person?
Yes, the public safety committee, we, public safety committee will meet on November 18th at 5:00 PM in the council conference room. We actually have two topics. One is a fire department staffing briefing, update briefing. And two, emerging issues, and the emerging issue is going to be, they're going to bring one of the new aid cars that we just paid for tonight for us to take a look at.
Oh, good.
And you may, and they want to be sure to show us the structure that we questioned the need to buy, just for the audience, that these things are really, really expensive. But we were putting people's backs out, and this has a kind of a power assist to get, so the firefighters won't have to get four of them to lift somebody on and off. So with that.
Okay. Mr. Prince?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Breer?
Yes, the finance committee will meet on Monday, November 18th at 4:00 PM in the council conference room. We have three items, the EOC remodel briefing, vouchers, and emerging issues in revenue streams. And let's see, that meeting goes from 4:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Zwicker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the planning and development committee meeting scheduled for Monday, November 18th has been canceled. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Taylor?
No meetings to report, Mr. Mayor, but last week has been a pretty busy week for me, and I'd like to just share some of those experiences, beginning with a wonderful conference that I had an opportunity to attend called Rail Volution. This was a conference that was held from October the 21st through the 23rd at the Western Hotel. It boasted 1,400 participants and attendance there from 200 cities and four countries. Also ran into our friend Peter Holland from the city of Seattle was there. But it consisted of just a wealth of information regarding transit-oriented development, employment, transit-oriented development. Over 80 workshops, mobile workshops, where many of the people that came in from out of town were shuttled all over the city to visit various different sites here in our region. Special events, I had an opportunity to go to the Mohai Museum, and they held a very impressive reception there, the trade show. It was very, very rich in information. A lot of innovative things are going on in our region, particularly in the Portland area, regarding transit-oriented development. And I hope to share some of this information as we begin to progress in the, how we're going to figure out a solution for our downtown corridor. We already have a transit center there. If we can figure out some opportunities to create some economic developments and employment there, that could be very meaningful. And that segues right into the second event that I had an opportunity to attend. As you may recall, last year, I was part of the funding, the founding of a group of members, there's 37 of us, who went to Washington DC and began an organization called Local Progress, which is chaired by Seattle council member Nick Locata. Well, we've now had, we've grown to over 300 members in this organization. And so we convened again for our second annual meeting in DC. Some of the things that we talk about, I wanted to share with you briefly, and I hope to come back to the council with more time, maybe at a future committee of the whole meeting, and share some of this information because it is quite a bit to digest, and I think that we can benefit from some of it. But Local Progress is a national municipal policy network made up of hundreds of local elected officials from around the country and key allied organizations who are united by a shared commitment to a strong middle and working class, equal justice under law, sustainable and living cities, livable cities, and good government that serves the public interest effectively. Local Progress seeks to build progressive infrastructure that will yield political and policy dividends for decades to come. And many of the things that we talked about there had to do with some of the issues we're facing here in our own city. For example, one of the items on our agenda was creating good jobs and community benefits. So we began to have conversations about things like living wage ordinances, community benefit agreements, those types of things. And as you may know, Nick Locata was very successful in Seattle in passing paid sick leave ordinance in that city. So again, I hope to come back and share some of this information. I had the pleasure of meeting some renowned electors in New York, Brad Lander and Jill Mari Williams, who were successful in interrupting the stop and frisk legislation or policies that were taking place in New York. Had to meet, opportunity of meeting other individuals and just all over the country and learning different things about what they're doing. So again, I'd like to get on the agenda on a council committee of the whole meeting in the future and really unpack some of this for you, but it was very rich, meaningful, and I think that there's some things that we can benefit from in our city. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next is audience comment, if somebody would like to address the council. What's the wish of the council?
Move, adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince, that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.